The councilman have to look at admission. And then we know what we bought, we know what we had bought.
Eighty dollars, huh? Eighty dollars, huh? Winfield closer.
Winfield does, yeah. And another place I went to, too. And, uh, they had a bank statement. Stood on this here looking through this. They can tell you what they put in, what they made last month, what they paid out last month, and what they got left.
We ain't got anything on West Jefferson. Maybe you done the last one. I don't see why we can run a business for town and not know what to take in and not know what to spend on it. And sit down and add these two pieces of paper together. And that don't work because there's no employees' salaries on here, the office salaries aren't on here. So we don't know if we making money taking in money or borrowing money, come out to borrow money to run the town. And we need to know completely. I mean, I appreciate you doing these right here. You kind of know where to go.
Don't that tell you all we do?
No. If you'll explain it to me, I'll try to understand.
Don't tell you who was red or white or blue or yellow or what. Man, you know, that's the way I look.
Well, I have those quarterly's and it may be full business years, you can see a little bit more, you know, give or have.
Yeah, we really need to know what's in each checkbook we have.
What give you that number?
There's about thirteen checking accounts.
We did not look up something like that, that's great. They have it ever, ever. Whatever they paid for the last two weeks, they go around the table, but not on Winfield.
Yeah, they already paid.
And then they ask questions.
They already paid for it, didn't show it to you.
Oh, they don't pay for them, too.
I don't either.
Councilman look at.
I do business with them over there. I can't even get paid if they say, and that's what counts for me. It's a way to know.
That's why I don't know the place the last meeting, trying to find them somewhere. They got a word. If you took in a hundred and fifty thousand, if you spent a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and they got it at the bottom of the wood, and all the councilmen, we got to look at. Like, uh, when we come in, last council made, well, when we come in, when me and Doc come in on the council, these other guys, they didn't know that. They couldn't tell us what they had and what they done spent on that, you know that.
Was this, was not the total receipt and this amount of spending there right over here? This not that one, but?
It is, but it's not all their employees. It's not all their employees on here. There's some, all the major checks, I guess we got it too. Rebecca, and one to you, or something. You know, the salaries, they're not on here.
On, uh, on a guy, how much is it max to go to West Jefferson?
Sixty dollars a ton.
How much is it go to Havre?
Third, forty something dollars a ton, I think it went up.
How much is it go to Vernon?
Thirty eight, thirty six, seven, eight, somewhere along there.
You think you saving money by going to West Jefferson?
Yeah. I'm saving by going to Vernon.
How, how you saving?
Well, it's about eighty dollars a ton up here. You want, you want to carry it up and show me how to say?
No, how much you saving a load by going to West Jefferson?
Uh, well, just by load, I couldn't just tell you right offhand, I'll call.
You just say, well, if you carry-
Why don't you come ask me that in there, I'll look it up.
If you, say, if you carrying six tons, how much is that?
Six times eighteen, hundred something dollars.
All right, if you carrying six tons of Vernon, how much would that be?
Two hundred and twenty-four.
All right, how much, how much do they suffer to the cost to go to here to West Jefferson?
Uh, no, no, we saving money going to West Jefferson, you look it up.
Put it on paper, anyway. Plus you paying a man two hours overtime a day.
Roger. This is, this is not, this is a session for this, this is not, this is not for you to jab us now.
It ain't jab, but I'm trying to say.
Yeah, it is, if you come ask me, if you come ask me in there, I'll tell you my thing.
I thought this was for asking, for saving money.
Why don't you come ask me so I can look it up? You go up with stuff that we have to look up. Why are you coming in here doing it? Why can't you come and learn my office?
I'm just asking.
I mean, you do this all the time, I don't knock you.
You say you saving money, so you show me how you saving.
I'll show you if you'll give me time to show you.
What, you just figured it out?
I'll give, I'll show you, we'll figure it out and show you how we saving money.
You can't, you can't show me that? No, we have, no, we don't have.
Yeah, you give me first off the card, we show it. Yeah, we did, Roger.
There's no way you can save.
I'm not gonna argue with you.
In no way you can save money.
Why you call me, I'm coming in my office so we can look it up and still get the board meeting, and we'll let everybody look the country, but here's what you saying, all right?
All I asked was a question.
Well, I'll ask, I'll get it for you.
How you saving money going to West Jefferson?
I'll get it for you, Roger, if you'll just give us time. I can't get it right now.
Do you know how many extra miles you putting on that truck a week to just go to West Jefferson?
I'll get it for you.
There ain't no way you can save money.
Well, I'll figure it out, and I'll show you, I'll show you.
Put it on paper, show it.
I will, but you, you come ask me, I ain't gonna do it right now.
Don't go on paper.
You ask me for it, for me.
I thought we were in the building.
I can, I can stop this, don't you?
You stopped it, I don't care.
Well, I don't care, Roger.
Every time I ask you a question, you don't stop.
Why don't you call me, we'll, we'll look it up?
This is what we have a meeting for you.
No, not, well, if you'll let me know, I'll know, I'll know what I can do for you.
Trying to ask you, is we saving, saving money or making money?
Daily, daily, daily operations, you ain't got no, it only might be called, is it?
I can't tell.
It's just, no, that's what we both know is something about it.
Well, I went to get city councilman, actually.
Well, why don't you ask, why don't you call me in my office or call me on my, you got my telephone, and ask that I can look it up and get all the figures for you.
How much do they suffer to the within a month?
You know I've taken that.
How they don't be on here?
They don't be on here, how much do they suffer?
Look it up, look on them, see, what you see.
Moore Petroleum?
Now, this is getting a bit.
No, they're a bit, you know, right.
All, all you gotta do is, all you gotta do is ask me.
I didn't come to argue with you tonight, I come to ask you a question. If you see they saving money-
Well, I'll ask you in there, instead of waiting for them.
It's probably following each month, so it's probably not gonna show up on in September. It's broken down, the Moore's Petroleum bill is about fifteen pages thick, and each person what they spend on there. So I, if this is what you wanted, you could call and ask me what Peter spent on putting fuel in garbage truck.
You, you, no. No, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have a two thing, paying diesel fuel.
No, it's not, it's not a bound, that it's not just looking at a bill and telling you just what they spend on the garbage truck. You have a police department, you have a street department.
Police department don't buy diesel fuel, they run them gas, they don't get diesel fuel.
You have to go through them, break it down, all you have to do is ask them.
That's real, I don't see the bill every month, come across the desk. How much diesel fuel we burn, how much gas we burn, I wanna see what, see can I help you save some money?
Does everybody want that?
We need to know what the money-
Everybody want that? If they do, we'll do it.
I think we need to prove the bill. And make sense. I don't understand why the Moore's not-
I mean, I ain't got no problem with it.
This attempt is long, I always say. You said these don't get paid, I guess, these don't get paid by the letter? And all we're getting?
Hey, we don't hold them a long time, we pay them.
If I wrote a check on ten one, it's not gonna show up on the night of the third. And they send us the bill on the fifteenth, and they send us the bill at the end of the month. We pay both, pay them one time a month, they send us two bills a month.
We made two, we made two times a month. So we need to see the bills. I need to see the bills, how much gas we burning, how much diesel fuel we burning. Need to see the bills. Are we paying them, we need to see them. That, they say, he say, that should be, should be a problem. Only thing we got-
When you ask about the diesel fuel and saving money, why can't you call me so I can look it up in my hour? Rebecca can look it up instead of coming to the board meeting, you want everybody to see you, I see why. I mean, well, why can't you do that, that's what you're supposed to do.
I can't come down, I got-
You're just one man out of several people.
I just asked a question, I can't come down.
No, I just answered it.
I got a job, I can't play golf, I got a job.
Well, I got a job too, I reckon, I live in a job.
That's all, I don't know that, I won't see the bill.
I like golf a lot, too.
We don't know what we spending. Ain't no way we know what we spending. And, oh, we don't know what we taking in.
Well, what's that?
You can't do, I, I wanna see the bank. See, I wanna see what the bank sent us, I don't know. Rest of the town do it.
Or me, or nobody else?
The rest of the town do it.
You don't know what it do, huh?
No, they do, I don't ask. Want me to lie there?
Huh?
You wanna call me a liar there? I don't ask. Yes, they, they got a straight, they got a straight on the table.
Did I call you a liar?
No, I shouldn't.
You called you a-
Well, you, you arguing with him down here.
I'm arguing because you can ask me this before we get in here to board meeting, Jerry.
Well, we don't have a meeting.
We're looking up, we'll bring you the bills every month, that's what y'all wanna look at.
Write the bills.
And y'all can come at four thirty if you want to, I'll kind of look at the bills. There ain't no problem to it, you can come by any time, we-
Ever two, ever two weeks that we done wrote a check, we need to look at what we writing a check for. That's just bills. And then the bills, that's just bills. That's here.
Well, is there any problem if you ask the question like, you just asked, are we saving money by going, and you want to know right now? Are there any problem you calling me before the board meeting and let me get the figures up?
I have to work, I can't count, this, this-
You work, I said you snipping around looking at the workers down here, is that what you call workers?
I do what now?
Snipping around looking?
I ain't got to snip around, I'm past any day.
Yeah, you do, you do it all the time.
We don't need to get into that thing.
No, we don't.
All right, well, you better keep that quiet.
No, I can do what I want to.
You think you can do what you want to?
You think you can do that? Fine, is that what y'all want? I ain't got no problem bringing bills, that's what y'all want.
I think we need, I think we need to look at, turn up.
I ain't got no problem y'all looking at the bills.
Yeah, we have, we have the bill, like, just supposed to. It's a big fine. All our, uh, part-time employees, our week, how, how much do we pay a day? Each week?
Um-
Each month?
Thirteen days. Well, thirteen now, um, I'm not gonna say.
No, I only know what wants. I reckon you got a man in here.
Yeah, I heard that, he's part-time too.
Who's that?
Daddy.
Who? Who's this?
Danny Kim.
Oh. And we got another guy down there, who's this?
Just part-time, we got another part-time down there.
Who's this, I can't tell?
What it matter?
It matter a lot.
No, it don't matter, I'm one of them, this is daily, daily operation, y'all giving permission to our, of part-time.
We give you permission to hire-
A part-time.
That wasn't who you said you were gonna hire.
What you told me?
You told us-
I hired two more boys, part-time, you know what I'm talking about?
You told us you were gonna hire, hire a mechanic.
Well, I did, Roger.
Yes, you did, man.
No, I did.
I'm not bringing names to a going executive meeting, then I'll tell you.
Yeah, you can do that. I heard, hey, I heard Deuce Bell too, on part-time, I heard Terry. And Terry, what's his name, his place called, I heard him, I heard, part-time.
Mason.
So I, I heard another part-time player, so what?
Mason.
Yeah, Mason, yeah, Mason, well, I heard others too, I heard, I had a number five, played football. He's one of the players I heard too. How are you?
Oh, Terry Kim.
Yeah, I heard him some, I heard Deuce Bell some, and then I heard Clay, so.
So we got three part-time employees?
We got any right now, he's got one working last week.
Hey, we'll get a few minutes, what about, uh, Fred Stone, we're gonna cut someone's lights off, who gonna, who gonna let Fred out?
Fred, that's served, I ain't there.
Huh?
I ain't there, he's a friend.
Hey, we, today's day, I'm ready, I'm gonna be pro. So, I'm on Jerry's meeting, so. Hello, Luke.
How are you, Mike?
We're good, how are you?
All right.
First of all, I'm gonna bring a bill out now, out here.
I have a time for it.
Look, uh, the day-to-day operations is not gonna be brought up in council meeting.
Come on, man.
Daily, day, day-to-day operations, kitchen?
Is what?
Is not gonna be brought up to council meeting.
Don't bring up anything, I wouldn't bring up anything to council make.
During the meeting, too.
It's not council make, we're going in council make next.
I'm not gonna listen to this, no. I don't want to, you know, it's not supposed to be brought up, and you're, you're supposed to have a last two weeks, the day-to-day operations, day-to-day operations.
I have heard that day-to-day operations.
Well, you can hear it from the, well, the board meeting, as soon as it's brought up.
I don't tell you, I ain't got slipped around, either, I don't know how to slip.
We do slip around, we got a different option, you get it out.
You doing your job, you wouldn't be worried about it.
I know, but I ain't doing my job, 'cause y'all vote me out, if you want to, Roger. But that's the way to get rid of me.
Five thirty, yeah?
Four minutes, three minutes.
About a little journey, I believe, you don't talk, you don't journey make.
Um, I thought we were making your, like, question on that.
Yeah, we are, we, uh, we got it, now.
You're a fucking man. Really, that's, I mean, not start early.
Your box is at five thirty-one. If you're not waiting for your line, like, any reason to be starting, you're a turkey.
Y'all through this, uh, workshop meeting or, or financial meeting? Well, it's all a meeting, or Gary, you live, right?
That's a friend. Chris, have the power, we thank you again for our lives, we thank you for bringing us another day to enjoy life. We thank you, Lord, for the rain that we got, that was so much needed by everyone. We come together here tonight as mayor and city council, and we ask you your blessings upon each of us as we make decisions that will affect our citizens and our town. We pray that we will have the wisdom with which to make these decisions. We ask you to go with us now, bless us all, please, thanks for asking, Christ's sake, and even in peace.
Get a grace to the light of nature.
I'm gonna get set, pretty sad, huh?
It's counting down.
Okay, before we go into the day process, now, I just, y'all got one of these copies on a community, Trump, Trump car tree, I'm going to the thirty, four years to have such a car.
Is that Trump?
Yeah, Trump. Trump, that's it, you know how I talk, Jerry. Uh, if I got any question, though, you know, everybody's home about that. And, uh-
Who's having this up?
Huh?
Who's having this up?
Only turkeys do it, and I don't.
That's right, well, they gonna, they gonna line up the parking in their time.
Yeah, they got their own plan, under control, right? And, uh, well, uh, well, I'm sorry, y'all, it's too much, I don't know. We're fighting for a grant, we're paying two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and to pay the streets, no, they, they open that up. But you don't, you don't have to, uh, match any of it. But if you match some of it, you sound a little changed again. So my suggestion was like to match ten percent of it.
You need a motion at the former?
Yeah, I do, really.
I'll make it, we agree to match, I don't know, ten percent of that, it's on two hundred and fifty thousand, if we're able to change that grant.
Sure, yeah, Lord.
Second, we didn't, didn't want to discuss, all in vote? Okay, I need a motion going into executive session, economic development, lady and gay.
I'd like to go back to that one, we were discussing our financial situation here. Uh, in lieu of the fact that our revenue is definitely down because the rent's closing, and revenues not coming in now, more of the rent money that we were getting out of that building. I, uh, would like to cross the top of the resolution or motion, whichever way this is being handled, that we okay all bills before they're tied. Also, and that's particular resolution and motion, that we dismiss all of our part-time employees until revenue starts coming in again at whatever point we may rent this building. I think if we don't, we fix to get in a financial situation where we gonna be in trouble. And then winter time's coming, we don't need all the safety or help. And I can't discuss people's money and everything, but I do know that they're not all working all the time, I do know that. What I'm not concerned is the financial situation in Cedar right now, so I'm looking over for discussion about what we talked about, what you guys-
Well, we wasn't glad, Jerry, we didn't plan on using any part-time, let's, like Danny Kim, we gotta have somebody to run that garbage truck when the period's off. But he is working part-time, but he, he's working, he, he can just benefit from it, right?
I understand, I mean, we just need to hire him to do that, whenever-
That's why I got him hired.
That type, but we really need to tighten our purse string, completely.
Do what?
We need to tighten our purse string because we're not taking in the revenue when we work.
Well, I've been tightening the purse string for three years now.
It's kind of, uh-
How did you do that, man? How did you do that?
We all do.
Huh?
We all sell. Y'all give me, I done it a lot of ways, we cut, we cut about four hundred thousand dollars, but, I don't know, he got a loan, and we making a loan.
Making money.
Even more discussion.
So, you know.
I don't find any.
Mine, you know. Putting the bills on the table and deciding which ones to pay or which ones don't to pay, is the role-
We got, we got to pay them all.
So the decision to, I think we're, our decision should be redirected to understand what we pay every month, okay? I, I don't, I don't have a problem with actually understanding what we have recurring bills. And any, we can talk about any major, uh, things that are coming up that are not recurring, that are not expected, we need to discuss those before we actually, uh, pay it, before we actually decide to actually have somebody do the work. Um, but second, you know, as far as the part-time help and tightening purse strings, we need to be, make a decision based on numbers, not emotion. So if we want to review what, what, what we don't, are not taking in any longer because of rents, and to review what we've, you know, where there are opportunities, I think we, that's certainly an opportunity to do. But we don't need to make it based on motion, we need to make it based on numbers, actual numbers. And right now, because we just brought this up, we don't have actual numbers to review. That's my, that's it, our, my, my opinion.
Well, you don't have more rainy days and days that they can't work outside, so everybody needs a cover in one.
No, I understand, I'm not, I'm not, the question, I'm just saying, we need to base it based on actual finances. We need to actually see the numbers before we make a decision on what we do with anybody. That'd be my, my take on it.
I mean, I, I have done all the research on this, uh, with the end of the month, the man that manages, went through the sanitation department and all that. They only have seven men working over there, and I'm not, and I'm not trying to get rid of any particular person. All I'm interested in is what we're spending, like, if we don't have to through the winter, till something breaks, and around the store, the rent, and you start coming back in. We're gonna pick it up, whenever something comes in down there, whatever day that may be, and hopefully back up, match the hire, whatever help we need, I'm okay with that. Right now, we're, we're- We come back.
We don't need to, they are part-time, they don't go in rent.
We know.
That's all.
Well, we've had several wise weeks, too.
Well, we, we, that's been hard, we've done a work, we patching streets, and they more going home, y'all think, I know you think, you know, but they are.
I mean, I can't, all, I, 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 getting into the execution, then I'll tell you, one of the parts that I like, that I cannot talk about, that, that, we'll become someone's man. We get into executive session, then I'll tell you one of the thoughts that I like, that I cannot talk about, that, can I, we can call someone today in executive session. So what you guys think?
I'm asking, we'll look at the bills, everybody need to look at the bills, you don't know, you look at your bills at home. I mean, I'm sure Philip here former, I think you look at your bills before you pay them, don't you, Philip?
Yeah, yeah.
They just don't pay them, no.
Yeah, I just don't pay them. I mean, you don't know your own display room?
Yeah.
Even the waterworks out there, don't they look at, they pass their bills around before they pay them?
They pass them around, I don't know where it's from, it's them, right, but they look at it.
Not serving one for you?
I don't mind, I don't mind, I just don't want to show me that thing, you don't have to have a monthly look, right, people, in your first month, and you look at it, now, some of them make me pay. You know, because sometimes paying's gotta be paid. But you, you glad the weapon seen this.
I guess I can rip in drag, or, if everybody comes out, that's the way we handle it.
Yeah, boy.
I say, I guess, that's the way it's gonna be, that's the way it'll be. I withdraw my motion.
Now, you're looking, we're going to make a second, like, I'm developing, like, Jesus.
What now?
You're going to executive session.
I got one question, I called in to be on the agenda, what do I have to do to be on the agenda?
Well, one thing.
Call in to be on the agenda.
Can I tell you?
Yeah, when I get, now, if I were Bobby Blue and he called in to be on the agenda, it wouldn't be a problem. But now, why, when I called in to be on the agenda, I can't be on, I called in the last three meetings.
Well, you went here one of them.
I know, but I still called in, I couldn't make it, but I called in.
You had your name on that.
Right. But, you know, I don't know, what, what do I?
What do you want me to tell you? Are you, you're through?
I have to be a Republican, uh.
Are you through?
Why, what, what do I?
Are you through? I've told you about ten times, I guess, that you got to tell me what you're gonna talk about.
I told you, I'm.
You said you're gonna talk, or you're on the street department, you gotta tell me what you're gonna talk about, the street department.
I'm gonna talk about.
I don't, just like the night, Roger, I don't wanna be talked, not, I can't look something up, I look up and figure out what you're talking about, and we'll talk about the council meeting. But day-to-day operations don't even have to be brought to this council meeting unless we vote on something. I mean, that, that's supposed to, you're supposed to see me, if so, if you got a question about.
I seen you the other day, I carried you over the other day, now I can get all that done.
We got one, just about all of them done.
I got, I got, I, I got, y'all got some of it done, you didn't fix the road over there, but I got it taken care of, we're gonna get it taken care of. That is the city limit over there. We hadn't worked over there a whole year.
We pushed out.
We hadn't worked over there a whole year, that's city limit just like it is, uh, over there by my.
Everybody want to make a move.
Well, I'm just asking a question, what?
Well, don't ask me, don't ask me in the office on there.
When people call you three times, you wouldn't come, that's when I come and got you, and carried you down there.
You done one.
That's when I.
Who called me three times?
Man, I come and got you and carried you over there.
Who called me three times?
Two weeks ago, and the job still is not done.
Who called me three times?
That's all that's.
Anybody want to make a move, you want to executive session?
I said.
I'll invite. Okay, right inside.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.